Good evening. I call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, January 3, 2013. Happy New Year. First order of the business is a prayer and the pledge. Those who would, please join us.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day that you have created for us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings. Father, we ask that you would guide these many women as they undertake the business of the city. Father, that their decisions would be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. We have Mr. Richard Cothran. Would you approach the podium, please, sir? Good evening.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Glad to be here with you and to all of y'all likely, a happy new year and prosperous new year to y'all. And I would like to refer to, in the new business down here under Section 8B, I would like to find out what this actually means, discuss and/or take action on recommendation for the planning of Commission of Resolution 01-13, adopting a plan of servicing annexation of property belonging to Kathy, and I can't pronounce the last word, but located at 7355 Overby Road. So is this annexation, is this just annexed into the city or is this going through to, for them developing it into another community back there or what?
I'll let Don LeVorn address your question to make sure we address it correctly.
This item that's on the agenda is just for a plan of services for an annexation request. This is not actually the annexation itself. An annexation request won't be on the agenda until the 17th.
To the 17th?
Yes, sir. This is just a plan of services.
Does this mean also that following up on the 17th, it's just going to come out for approval for them to develop as planned before?
That would be the annexation, as he stated. It would be voting on the annexation of the parcel of property into the city.
On the 17th? Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
God bless y'all and have a good rest of the day.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your input. Next on the agenda is awards and recognitions. The Beanie from the board.
Mayor, there are no staff awards, recognize?
Thank you. Item five is public announcements. I'd like to address and invite the public, January 9, 2013, to the annual Business Breakfast sponsored by the Fairview Area Chamber of Commerce. We'll have at 7:30 a.m. at Country Cafe on Highway 100, a business breakfast for networking of our local business community. Our guest speaker will be Marsha Blackburn. If you're interested, you can call the Chamber of Commerce, I'm so sorry, Hickory Home, I wrote the wrong thing, Hickory Home, on Highway 100. And if you are interested, you can contact the Fairview Area Chamber of Commerce. All public is invited. Any other public announcements? Sorry.
None from the staff, Mayor.
Item number six is the approval of the minutes. The minutes for approval is December 6, 2012, the Board of Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next approval of the minutes is for the December 6, 2012, public hearing.
Move to approve.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Item seven, eight, oh, business update on City of Fairview projects. City Manager Hyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. Not been a lot of movement in the last few, couple of weeks, but we do have some information from T.D.O.T. concerning the traffic light at Cox Pike. Looking like it's going to be May. Don found that out today, but unfortunately pushed back. We don't know if it was due to the weather in the northeast with Hurricane Sandy or what, but that's what we've got now. It's been signed off on. The amendment, I think, has been signed off on by the states. They're moving forward, it will be May. They're moving forward with production of the stanchions. Also, we do anticipate and are to put out for bid, the widening of Bowie Lake Road on January 15th, so we've reached that time of the year so we can get that going. We should bring that back, but advertising has to be open for 22 days. So we'll bring that back with bid opening at probably the first meeting in February. Also, we are moving forward, progressing nicely on our welcome signs. The second one is, we have the columns up at the Highway 96 fire station, and we should be having the sign installed probably about the end of next week, I believe, is when that is. So hopefully that'll be completed, and we'll do some landscaping, and then we'll move to sign number three. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question, and really I'm going to address it to the board. It does not have to be discussed at this moment, but I do have a question of the finalization of that third sign. We may need to readdress the placement, and I'd like y'all to be thinking about that in any comments maybe shared with the city manager before they go forward into that. We may need to think about the end result of that parcel and its PUD. And actually, I may even ask Don, is that something that would address the PUD that we need to go into Planning Commission thoughts about?
Well, the, I don't believe the PUD document itself has placement of signs on the property. As a rule of thumb, when a property is rezoned as a PUD, what you want to do on the property has to be included in the master development plan that is approved with the rezoning application. So what is on that approved document, according to how PUDs are administered, that's all that can be placed on the property.
That's the reason I brought that up, so at this point, I just wanted to make it acknowledge that we may need to readdress that third sign before it started. And you can handle that however you want to with discussion. Great.
Will do.
Any other questions?
I did have one thing that just popped in my mind, and it just left me, oh, I don't know where it went. It was right up here in the, oh, the Evergreen Park. We should start working out there next week, so you'll see some things happening out there. We're going to be clearing some trees out of the way, probably wrestling with a beaver or two out there. I understand they've been quite active lately, so we're going to try to work around them and their schedule, but we've got some things to do out there, so that, you'll see that happening starting sometime next week.
Excellent. Any questions from the board? Thank you. Item seven B, discuss and/or take action on roadscape scope change. Director LeVorn.
I had a phone call from Monique Hazelwood today on the scope change, and she said all we had to do far as the procedures of changing the scope change was to send an email, which I had already sent the email that we wanted to do a scope change. So what I would need the commission to do tonight is to either tell us to move forward with the roadscape grant or to cease action on that grant. If you want to move forward, then all I've got to do is contact Ms. Monique Hazelwood and tell her that we're moving forward. Then we'll move forward with the environmental documents. Once those environmental documents are approved by the state, then we'll be issued a notice to proceed for design. Then we'll contact Loson Associates for the design portion of that. And once that is taken care of, then we'll present that to the state. And once that is approved by the state, they'll issue us a notice to proceed with construction. Then we can start placing the landscaping according to the plan that's approved. So what I need to know tonight is, does the board want us to move forward with the grant or do we just want to drop it and leave it as it is?
With one understanding that we've already appropriated the funding that we had set aside, the $20,000, we'd have to reappropriate funding, our match.
There's no reimbursement back to them at this point for that $20,000? If we move forward with it and then we change our, we do have to reimburse it, correct?
If we move forward with it and we get into the environmental documents that has to be prepared first, and then you decide you don't want to move forward with it, then we'll have to reimburse the state for the environmental documents. If we move forward through the environmental document stage into the design stage and then we back out of it, then we've got to reimburse the state for the environmental and the design.
And this work is primarily focused on the half cloverleaf or?
Yes, sir.
Right, right there.
But there's no amount that we have to accept, so the 20% our match can be something that we feel comfortable with for them to work through the design, right?
It, it-
I mean, they can't instruct us that we have to spend 100, which means we have to spend 20. It's our choice of the design and the cost of the design.
It's just 80, 20.
Right.
What is my line cost?
Right.
Up to $100,000.
I'm favorable to move forward. What are the wishes of the board?
That's a motion I second.
I make a motion to move forward with the scope change confirmation, environmental.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask something? How much of this money are we going to be liable for this fiscal year?
I wouldn't, wouldn't really know. I don't know at what point we're going to get to the construction phase. We may not even get to the construction phase during this fiscal year. It may be next fiscal year before we get to the construction phase. If we, if we don't make it to the construction phase before this fiscal year, we shouldn't have any expenditure because the environmental documents and the design plans is at no cost to the city. Thank you.
Comes to the cost of the city, but isn't that part of the 80% of?
From my understanding, with the emails going back and forth to Sean Bible and Monique Hazelwood, is that all environmental and all of these designs portions of that are at no cost to the city. So that would mean that that was not even, would not even part of the 28% match. So the only thing that we are going to have to have expenditures on would be the construction phase of that project. And that's where the 28 would kick in, is on the construction phase.
And we said a dollar amount yet?
That would come in in design, right?
That would come in at the design.
Because if we design elaborate and it costs 100, then we got a 20, and we have to vote on that before we let it loose. If we designed something of 50, then-
So do they have to approve our design process?
Yes, sir. Once, once Loson Associates completes the design phase of that, they submit it back to the state, the state approves it, and once the state approves it, they will give us a notice to proceed to construction.
Do we have to call the design process? Who's going to have control of it?
Good question.
The city will be working with Loson Associates on that design.
So we will have input with them. It's not just they get to design it.
Yes, sir.
So if it was too elaborate, then we could exercise at that point and say, no, we don't want to go that far. Yeah.
And I see this a potential fall project, so it won't be in this budget, but of course, that's under the control of how quickly they move. We have a first and a second to move forward with the scope change and the environmental process and begin the design conversation. And a second. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, discuss and take action on city manager evaluation. Commissioner Bissell.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not exactly sure why I'm beside this, but I'll just, I guess, kick off the conversation on this. All five commissioners submitted evaluations, all five commissioners, without going through an expansive list of how we all scored, and I'm including you in that, Mayor, as Mayor and Commissioners, rated our city manager with at least a met performance in all categories. Therefore, under the system that we have, he is entitled to a merit increase equal to one step and beginning July 1st, just as any other employees that we, we have. So having said that, I, as I read it, I'm not sure we need to pass a resolution giving him a raise. He's just automatically entitled to it because of his evaluations. Is that correct, City Attorney?
If you approve based on the evaluation, yes, sir.
Okay. So, in that particular case. Now, we also have the provision of we can grant an extra step increase as he can with his employees, should we feel that that is necessary or warranted, excuse me, or earned. His overall evaluation under all 10 categories was a 4.25. His average under each of the 10 categories ranged from a 4.0 in the one category, the lowest of the 10, to 4.5 was his average in the highest of the 10. So based upon that, I think 4.25 exceeds the three-point mark for one, for a merit increase significantly, and I make a motion that he be granted a second step increase, which in turn would be a total of 4% raise beginning July 1st of the fiscal year, the next fiscal year.
Is there any form of motion?
Yes, sir.
Discussion?
Mayor, if I may. We also had, last year, outlined a performance agreement and didn't know if we wanted to get into that again, probably not tonight, but between now and the first meeting in February or something of that nature like we did last year. Setting goals and that type of thing for this next calendar year.
And for the public's purpose, this was a evaluation with numbers from 1 to 5, 5 being excellent, just to let you know. And I would just like to see in the performance evaluation, the, what you just said, the performance, the performance agreement, that it be done in a way of anything that was for or below that a plan of action be discussed? And four out of five of the commissioners did have a 4 or below on budget processing and then also on supervision. So those would be the two that I would like to highlight as we discuss. Just plan of action and discussion of how those goals can be set to where you are working on that, and we can discuss it again as the year rolls through. Other discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
I'm comfortable with the, the first one, because I believe he's earned it 100%. The second one, I'm not saying he hadn't, but I'm, I'm not so sure. We shouldn't have further discussion during the budget process with Commissioner Carroll I'm not against it, I'm just going to abstain from the vote at this time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I say no. At this time, we'll move on. Discussion, take action on Windstream contract. Director LeVorn.
I believe y'all had the Windstream contract in your packets. City Attorney has reviewed it and had some changes that he asked Windstream to put in the contract, and I'll defer to him to discuss that with y'all.
There was, there was two things. My first concern wasn't with Windstream, I asked this of the city manager and of Don, was did we have any existing contract that was going to have to be terminated with anyone? And if so, how much was it going to cost us to get out of it? And they said that we were on a month-to-month or pay period-to-pay period or week-to-week however they were paid with the remaining providers, so that cleared that up in a hurry. The only other real question I had is, as contracts for this type of service goes, their contract was very, to me, very clear, didn't have any ambiguities, didn't appear to have anything that was trying to ambush anybody. It was, it was a very straightforward contract that even applied the, to any, in any disagreements that might come up, the laws of the state of Tennessee, and I was really glad to see that because providers kind of got you if they, if they want to put some other state and you get them all over the country, and this one has Tennessee law. The only real problem that I had, and it was solved, and I would like to give them credit for this, they, when I expressed to them that I had a problem with it, that we couldn't do what they were asking, their explanation was, and I can understand that, that this is a contract that they use all over the country, and every state's law is not set up like ours. But my concern was in the provision that was in the contract that said, and it was very unlikely that this would ever happen, but you can't have it in there. There was a clause in there that related to if damage was done to the equipment by intentional action of someone from the city or if we allowed someone to do that, that we would, or if they did, they, it was a mutual agreement, the type of thing, that we would, we would agree to indemnify them and hold them harmless. They would agree to indemnify us and, and hold, hold them harmless from actions by their employees. And I explained to them that, you know, this is highly unlikely to happen, but even if it did happen, that we can't indemnify and hold anybody harmless because it's against public policy, violates the Constitution of the state of Tennessee, two articles of the Constitution, in that you're in essence pledging the credit of the city for somebody else's actions. The second thing being that the chief financial officer has to sign off every year saying that, that the budget has been funded, and if you're going to indemnify and hold someone harmless, you don't know how much you're indemnifying and holding them harmless for, you don't know what the amount's going to be. So you're in essence pledging the credit of the city for it, and you're indemnifying, you're spending money that hasn't been appropriated. And I sent that, that concern to them. Next day, I got back a reply, very timely, very nice reply, said, here's the addendum, they preferred to leave it in the contract, but addendum taking precedence over that, saying just, and removing that provision from the contract. And that was the only problems I had with it. I didn't do the math on it because I didn't know what kind of agreements they had, but as far as the contract language, I have no problem with it.
Does it increase our cost from what we're currently paying?
We're currently paying roughly $3,100 a month for the services and paying three different carriers for that service. It is an increase to $3,492, but it is an upgrade to, from what we have. Right now, we can't stream live the meetings because we don't have the adequate bandwidth to do that. This service will provide us with enough bandwidth to stream live video of these meetings. It gives us a 10-meg line here in the city hall with a fiber optic lines that we can increase that bandwidth as, as we need to increase it without doing any more upgrades to the building.
And with that increase, have, have you discussed when that would start with Ms. Puitt and how that fits on budget?
The, the scheduling that they've got for getting everything online is not until April or May, I think. So we would only have two months, two months of service that we'd have to pay out until the new budget year.
Okay. Other discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
First and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? New business eight, thank you, Director LeVorn. New business eight A, discuss and or take action on appointment from the Board of Commissioners to the Planning Commission. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we appointed the citizens that would be a part of the Planning Commission, and since they've got a meeting next Tuesday, we need to make sure that besides the mayor's appointment, another commissioner needs to be appointed. So at this time, if y'all would nominate or-
What are the wishes of the board?
Nominate Tommy Sutts.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Sorry. Thank you. Item eight B, discuss and or take action on recommendation from the Planning Commission on Resolution 01-13.
Have that resolution, because I don't know.
Is that it?
Is there an official one drawn up? There it is. It's on page two. It's a resolution adopting a plan of services for the annexation of property belonging to Kathy E. Biata and to incorporate, say, within the corporate boundary of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. The property is located at 7355 Overby Road, Fairview, Tennessee, and is shown on the city of Fairview, Tennessee, a geological listing of assessment roadmap 46, parcel 44. Move for approval.
We have a first and a second discussion. Is there anything that the Director LeVorn, you'd like to add to this in discussion?
No, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight C, discuss and or take action on ordering new fire apparatus, Quint mini pumper, payment method to be determined upon notice of delivery. Commissioner Bissell.
Thank you, Mayor. In my report out of the Public Safety Committee at the last meeting, this was one of the many items I just threw out there for information that in working with Chief Cooper on this, we've really reached the end. Back in June or July of last year, we put out bids for a new truck, fire apparatus, I'm probably calling it the wrong thing, sorry, Chief, but put out bids for a new truck, and those folks that bid on the new truck have been in limbo for the last six months, waiting on us to give them a decision as to what we were going to do. And in fact, the chief has been noticed by those people that we will have to resubmit a bid request, that they will no longer honor what they said they would because too much time has passed if we don't do something this meeting. So, and that, we anticipate a cost increase in that, should we have to do that. So I'll turn it over to Chief Cooper, and he'll give us our options as to what we can do, but the point I wanted to make is if we don't do something tonight, whatever we decide is the right course of action, it will probably cost us more money if we have to rebid. The reason that we waited the last six months was, it takes about a year to deliver these trucks, and this would put us into the next fiscal year before we would have to, like we're doing this year with the tanker, it would put us in the next fiscal year on determining just exactly, you know, how we wanted to pay for it and what the loan would be and that sort of thing. So, Chief Cooper? So, Chief Cooper?
Thank you. Backing up just a little bit, when we did go out to bid, I asked for a number of different vehicles to give the board options. And we originally intended to award those bid in July. Finance Director says, no, let's wait till December. That way, we know we have a revenue stream coming in a year from now. And actually, our first payment won't be due until... Six to 12 months after we take delivery. So we're looking at two budget cycles from now before we have to make our first payment. A lot of things have happened in the last six months. We have lost the county area and the county contract and those three trucks. We have replaced the tanker. We lost the engine. Haven't replaced that, and that's why we're here tonight. ISO came to town. They weren't supposed to be here till 2015. That was a surprise. Since our ad hoc committee meeting, we were awarded the Safer Grant for the three firemen. So I don't now, will not hire the city firemen next January. I've got no place to sleep. Only got three bedrooms. I'll have three people on duty. We'll put those off for two budget cycles. When ISO came to town, we still had the county trucks, and we were allowed to count that equipment. I anticipate we're going to go from a six to a five. I still haven't heard from them. It's been over 100 days. I will have to, I'm waiting until I hear from them to advise them that we've lost the county equipment. They told us flat out, you're good on training, you're good on your records and things like that. Used to have three stations, you only have two. Used to have four fire engines, now you only have two after January 1st. I didn't keep it a secret from them. I wanted to be open with them that we're losing this county contract. He said, but the stuff is here now. We'll count it now, but when you lose it, you've got to call me and tell me. Okay. I don't want to go from a five to a seven, which is where we may go. Our required fire flow, I don't want to get too complicated, but our required fire flow is 3,000 gallons a minute, and I have 2,500 in the two engines we have now. You have to have a reserve, two fire stations, one of them goes in the shop. You have to put something in that building. We'll use our new tanker to fill that slot, but that doesn't count towards your basic fire flow. That's first-out engines. What I want to do is eventually put a station back on the east side of town by one of two ways. Either put up a metal building like we have on 96, and using the Safer Grant people and hiring three more, two budget cycles from now, man both stations and put a single wide trailer next to that temporary building. Or I have a government agency that will go halves on a station on the east side within the next two budget cycles. They want that station up and running to cover the unincorporated area. They're moving their downtown station, got sold out. I covered this before. It's going to move to Columbia 840, leaving a huge gap out here, Fernvale Valley and all that. That was presented to their budget committees, received favorably. Not only that, the committee came back and said, ask Fairview, whenever they get ready to build a west side station years from now, we'd like to go halves on that one, too. So, in our discussion, when we bought the Deer Ridge property, when Ms. Shirley and I went to see the mayor, Anderson, discussion was, strictly discussion, that's all the far they've ever gotten, that the county would finance the station, we would repay our half interest-free. Now, that was then. We still have more budget cycles and committees to go through, but we have an opportunity to stick build the east side station at half price. We would build three bays, our engine, their engine, and a future ambulance, because we have to, we're getting to where we're going to need another ambulance someday. If the commission says, no, we're not going to talk about an east side station, period, sit down, shut up, chief, then I'm going to take a different tack with what equipment we buy. If you're willing to say, I'm going to listen to an idea from you, chief, during the budget, that's going to change the amount of equipment I'm going to buy and what type. So I need to ask you, is that something you'd even listen to during the budget process coming up, I think we're going to start in February, to, or is it just a bad idea altogether?
Would the old location work for you?
Too far east. It needs to be somewhere around Horn Tavern and 100, somewhere in there. There's nothing that far out where it was before, and that piece of property is too expensive. That would still be doable if it's going to eliminate the cost of the land.
Clarify the location you're speaking of, please.
The east side animal shelter.
Okay.
So is it something you'll even listen to?
I'll always listen to you.
Okay. That said, and again, since the ad hoc committee met, we got the Safer Grant. There is a, we showed the slides last time, a type of apparatus called a Quint, and it basically is a ladder truck, but not the kind that Franklin has that cost a million bucks. And actually, the Vice Mayor at the Nightlights, you pointed out, hey, we're going to buy one of these. We're never going to buy one of those. We don't need one. The tallest building you build in Fairview is 45 feet. However, that type of vehicle is also known as a Swiss Army knife. You can use it more for rescue. Right now, I don't have anything. If I have to go fight a fire in the apartment complexes, I'm dead in the water. I've got to call Franklin or the county. The county keeps theirs up at Sneed Road in Hillsborough. And it's about a 45-minute trip to get it here. But we could use it as an engine and man both stations. What I want to do is drive our six to a four. How much money is that? I asked the ISO guy when he was here. He says, I go from a six to a four in this size city. He's been in the business forever and ever. He said between $400,000 and $600,000 a year savings. I wanted a little more than that. So I called my insurance company, gave them the cost of my insurance. What happens if I go from a six to a four? 200 bucks a year. Mr. Lawrence says, there's about 3,000 houses in the city of Fairview. I'm going to knock that down to 2,500. He says, eh, maybe about 3,000. We know there's 2,500. 2,500 times 200, that's a half a million bucks, not counting the businesses. That's money in their pocket every single year. So my recommendation is we do not buy the mini pumper if we're going to open two stations. If we decide not to later on, we can always come back and address the mini pumper later. But to go for the low-bid Quint from Rosenbauer, and we'll have the money to pay for it, again, it's two budget cycles from now before we make our first payment.
And how much was that, chief?
Yeah, let me, I should have known that off the top of my head, shouldn't I?
Does this cost $750,000?
No, no, both of them cost $700,000.
$618,959. Yeah, it's another 150 for the mini. So much has changed that, though, with these new grant people. And again, if we decide not to build the east side station, we can come back and look at the mini pumper later. The reason for the mini pumper is to hold down the wear and tear on the big apparatus. But we've lost the county contract. We're knocking down about 30% of our calls. We increase about 10% a year, so by 2015, we're right back to where I am now. However, splitting the city in half, you only run a half-year apparatus on medical calls. And when these guys are gone on a medical call, I've always got a crew ready for them to fire. Right now, my two people on duty are tied up. Yeah, well, we will have more, and we have our new tanker. I probably should have bought it here tonight to use as a reserve. When one of these apparatus goes in the shop, we move that in there. I've got a fire truck behind every door. Yes, over it.
And when, chief, will the next piece of apparatus need to be bought?
Good question. When we set this up in 2005, we hadn't replaced any apparatus, nor did we have a plan for it. We said every four years, we're going to buy a piece of apparatus, finance it, pay it off before the next one comes due. 2010, the ad hoc committee wisely, now we know, wisely said, when I asked for the rescue truck and the engine, you've got to have one or the other, chief. We bought the rescue truck. Come back in two years to address the engine. Again, we now know that was a wise decision. So here we are. Our next cycle is 2015, keeping the four years. With splitting up the calls, reducing the number of calls per apparatus, my recommendation is to skip that cycle and not come back until 19. By then, all of our fleet will be paid off, and we'll be back to the original plan we had where we finance them, pay them off, the next one's up. Now, the 500,002, that doesn't include businesses. Businesses pay way more in insurance than homes do. Imagine what Walmart pays a year? Knocking it down from a six to a four, that's a lot more than a half a million a year. First question they ask you, what's your ISO rating? Now, for elected officials, it's tough on you guys. You've got to come up with the money. There's no revenue coming in from this, but the savings goes right back in your pocket. The resident looks at their insurance bill, looks at their insurance bill they got now. It goes down. It's real money. But again, it's tough on elected officials because you've got to come up with the, you've got to come up with the money, but you don't have any revenue coming in. And I appreciate that. Yes. All of them will be paid off by then. Yeah, you can go to six. That would be paid off by 19. And something else, Crystal talked to the banks and some people. Nobody will give you a quote over a year out on interest. And that's understandable.
Well, I make a motion, we buy the Quint.
Does the Quint mean five of something?
Yes, ma'am. Good question. Carries hose, pumps water, carries water, has ground ladders and an aerial ladder. I probably should explain that at the start.
I asked the same question.
We have a first and a second discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Chief Cooper.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bussell. Discussion, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. We got, Mayor spoke to me earlier about having a project workshop on February 7th at 6:00. We'll get you more information as we get closer to that. The other thing is, on a personal note, I've got, this tonight concludes my third year, and tomorrow starts my fourth year. And I've been very excited about being in Fairview and the growth, and I just enjoy working with the U or enjoy working with the staff. And the citizens of Fairview have been very good to work with as well. And it really makes a difference when you seem like everybody kind of gets it a little bit, and we all are on the same page and working and pulling in the same direction. We've got a lot more to do, obviously. I appreciate the evaluation. Everybody wants to be evaluated by their supervisor, and it helps you understand where you need to improve, and that's very valuable to me in my professional life as we move forward with what we have to do here. Thank you.
Staff comments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, have a copy of my report. Planning Department has reviewed a preliminary subdivision plan for Phase 1 of Hightberry Point, 23 lots. Will recommend approval to the Planning Commission next Tuesday night. From talking with the developer, he seems to think that they will maybe see some construction starting within the next nine months on that subdivision. Building Permit Department has issued three building permits. The total construction cost of those permits was $213,360. Issued 25 electrical permits. Complaint Department, believe it or not, received no complaints last month. Filled it 26 calls for service-related orders, forwarded them to the Property Department for work to be completed. Building Coes Department reviewed one commercial building plan, completed 22 building inspections, issued one certificate of occupancy. Coes Violation Department received two complaints, issued 12 violation letters, no letters of failure to comply were sent out, and no citations written.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Other staff reports, please.
Commissioners, Chief Harris is under the weather tonight, so standing in his place. Police Department stats for December include 69 arrests, five of which for DUI. We had five domestic-related arrest calls, 11 drug arrest calls, and there was a total of 164 citations issued for the month. There was 26 accidents occurred within the city limits, 21 of those being minor, five being major injuries included. The total calls for the Police Department for the month of December was 537 calls for service.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Bring you up to speed on the sign. As City Manager Hyatt said, we should have the sign portion installed by Wednesday of next week. The capstones were being delivered to the masonry contractor, and I should have them early next week. So sign number two should be 100%. I would say by Friday, we'll get it graded out, get seated and strawed, and we'll be ready to start discussing the sign three. My crew's been working hard on, with heavy winds and picking up leaves. The only thing I could request is if you do have downed trees or down limbs, bring them within two to three feet of the curb line, with the largest portion out towards the curb. It just makes it easier on the city crews, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
We ran 81 calls in December and totaled out at 945 for the whole year. That's a little bit down from the year before. And of course, those numbers will drop even more since we're out of the county business. Couple of housekeeping items. One, the Safer Grant, we advertised locally. I'm sure glad we didn't advertise nationally. Got a lot of applicants, and some of them already certified, some of them already carrying EMT and paramedic. We had one girl who just got on. She walked in, and she unloaded just a stack of certifications. She's ready to go to work. I don't have to send her to no schools. So we hope to have those folks who don't have to give notice to their current employer on the job by the 25th, and those that do by February 8th. I have all three of them working. We bought our rescue truck a year ago, or I guess it's been almost a year and a half ago now. And, well, first let me back up. Our tanker, we just got, the tanker is now, the manufacturer who built the tanker, our tanker is now their picture on their lead webpage. It came out so good that they put our picture up there in their, on their, the opening, what do you call it? The header page of their website is our tanker. But the rescue truck, we kept getting requests and requests and requests for the specs on it, and finally, got some feedback from the vendor in Florida. They sold four of them with our specs, including to the city of Los Angeles, Baldwin. It's now known as the Fairview Spec Truck in their line. So I said, I want some royalties or something here. So we're on the map. Thank you. Yes. Two cycles away, yes. That will run out three years from December 20th. So that puts it 13, 14, 15. December of '15 is when you'd have to make a decision. That's in that middle of the fiscal year, so you have to make a decision by July of '15 on whether to keep them or not.
But we're not required?
Do. No, we have no matching, and there's no obligation to keep them. The only thing, if you lay them off, you've got to give them their unemployment until they go get another job. I probably think we're going to have grown enough by then to take a further look at keeping them.
Great, thank you.
Hello, everybody. I just got a couple of quick numbers. Programming numbers from 2011 were 6183. This year, it ended at 9,098, which is an increase by 2935. And I also met with Dwight Barnett, the State Forester, and Mike Berkeley, myself and Jenny, and one of the Friends members went out there and talked about the forest management plan, and it'll be coming to the park board on Monday, so.
Great. Clarification, 9,098 what?
People, for programming.
Per program?
For, yes. For the whole year.
Okay, okay.
So that's a pretty big increase.
Excellent.
And she's adding more summer camps and everything, so should be a lot more people coming.
Super, thank you. Again, on the map. Other comments? Other staff? All minds clear? Commissioners, comments? Oh, City Attorney, you're next. See?
Fortunately for tonight, I have nothing further at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good night to forget me.
Commissioners, comment. Commissioner Bissell?
He knows I was watching the clock to see, you know, if we're going to have to go past that, so.
I had expended all the words that my good friend Commissioner Bissell will allow me tonight.
I'm not going to add to that, so I don't have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioners Sutton?
Just a quick comment for discussions that we had in workshop. We probably discussed a spacing for people that attend this, maybe small spacing. I think the suggestion that we're going to put out there is 25 and 40 dollars for the meetings attended. It's going to come back out, and if I can't get City Manager and the truck, City Attorney to draw for this up, that's looking to start deliberations on it.
He's over there.
I believe we have. You said I had to say that, I laughed. Other than that, the last year was a great year. The City of Fairview, we moved, we improved, and we grew greatly, more than, I think the city in the last couple of years, three years, has probably moved more than it has in the last thirty years. And I'm excited about the improvements and changes that we're going to have and the goals we had to keep, some of that hometown feel about it and generate the things that we're going to see with jobs, lower taxes, the good things along, to keep it, keep the progress, keep the municipal, keep that, the zoning made now, that all the buildings are going to start looking a lot, become like Franklin the way it is, the faces, normal metal buildings and stuff coming from the south of, and so I'm looking forward to the, to be working with my other Commissioner Minn and the Mayor from Friday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor.
Well, the only thing I'd say is thank you for your attention. Happy New Year. 2013 is ahead of us. You be the change, make it the best, and I appreciate all your input. Visit our website, www.fairview-tn.org. Any comments or suggestions is always welcome. Commissioner Carol was absent due to family illness, so if you'll keep her in your prayers. Adjournment?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Good evening.